All right, so we're good, Jackie? All right, we will go ahead and get started. Thank you for being patient with us. We will start with item 1.1, which is a review of this evening's agenda, just so that members of the audience are aware. While this is being recorded, it is not currently being livestreamed. We're having some difficulties, so we will post that recording later. And then Councilman Smith is with us virtually, so he is online. And Councilman Henderson and Councilwoman Orne should be joining us shortly. I know Councilwoman Orne is at a water board meeting, so we will see them join us here in just a few minutes, either digitally or in person. So with item 1.1, review of this evening's agenda, are there any items that we need to make adjustments to? Nope, all right. Item 1.2, any future agenda items?
Mr. Mayor, I have one. Before I suggest the agenda item, there's a little context I want to make for that. So, and I think we probably need three nods for this, too. So, as I think the public's aware, I know council and staff are aware, there have been some ongoing kind of informal meetings, discussions, kind of feeling each other out, meetings with the developer Olympia Hills, trying to see if there was even an interest or the possibility of discussing the interest about an annexation. Based on Allen's original analysis, kind of suggested there was a really important reason for us to have some discussions there. But most of those discussions have not been consisting of much material discussion of any kind. There's no negotiations, there's no plans, it's just kind of an informal, how are we, where are we kind of thing. And I think that it's probably time, and it's more important for us to advance that into a meaningful discussion where we actually are authorizing and encouraging staff to have more formal discussions, to understand and identify what Harriman City's needs and wants would be, and trying to understand what the developers' wants and expectations might be, to determine whether an annexation process should even be started. So, my wish would be that there would be support and authorizing staff to go ahead and engage that, so I'd hope that there would be support for that. And then the second item would be, this is the agenda part, is I would like to make sure that we just have a standing item on our work meeting agenda that would be an Olympia Hills update, so that all of the public, staff, council are updated continually where how things are being discussed, what is happening, where are we in those discussions. I want it to be totally transparent and straightforward so that we all understand where we're at with that. So, it wouldn't make sense to have those if we didn't have the first part, so.
So, what, in regards to the agenda and to what we, so I would ask that staff put that for at least the next few meetings on the agenda, as it only takes two members of the council to add items to the agenda. So let's put, or at least for the next two meetings, discussion for Olympia Hills on the work, on the work meeting. I think that council has, I think, given staff some direction. I think if we need, it's time to have a formal discussion, we can have that next week to give a little bit more definitive, sorry, our next meeting, as definitive as what the actual path of the city is. But I'm comfortable with where the city, where the staff has been involved in some of these conversations, they've gotten direction from multiple council members to start having these preliminary conversations. To move forward, I think it is valid that we have a conversation that's been noticed that is more formal, solidifying a position of this body.
Let me be clear, that I'm not suggesting that we make any formal agreements.
No.
Or that we do anything in that nature. What I, my hope is, and I want to articulate this carefully, is that I believe that although a couple of council members, or two or three council members giving indirect encouragement or support for these conversations is a little bit different than in a public meeting having those same two or three or four council members say, "We're supportive of investing the time and energy that it's going to take to find out whether or not we have anything." Does that make sense?
Absolutely, and I agree.
The argument was made that Allen's analysis was hypothetical, and it is based on just some current numbers. If there was an annexation, could those numbers change? Would they change? Would the units change? You know, any of that stuff. And then we could create a more substantial analysis that would give us idea of, could we get the infrastructure done, and would it make fiscal sense for the city in the long run? And I think those are really the two big, big questions. I don't think we can have even the discussion until we dig, and so I want to encourage staff to do a little more digging. And for lack of a better term, I would like the council to provide them some, a little more formal direction, start digging and bringing some material to us as a council that can start driving our considerations and more formal discussions.
Yeah, I'm in complete agreement, and I think that's, as we have that on our future agenda, we would direct staff to start being ready for some of those discussions, so that we can have those discussion with the entire body and give some more formal direction. But we'd ask that staff be prepared as they continue to look into the specifics on that.
Councilman Smith, any comments there?
Yes, yes, thank you, Councilman Shields. First off, I agree that we need to be able to have a little bit more formal direction on these particular discussions. I may recommend maybe just a slight change in how you presented it, in that even though we're talking right now specifically about Olympia Hills, because there is a adopted plan in place, and we know some of those parameters moving forward, and again, have something to go on, there are other landowners that could potentially entertain an annexation option as well. And so the only thing I would say in terms of the item as agendized, is that we just put annexation update, or something along those lines, because it could be, it should not be specific, though those discussions right now may center on one particular development, there are potentially more west of and outside the city that could be looking at options as well, and I think we need to engage all of those landowners as we look at all of the options west of the city. So, in terms of how the item reads, again, I don't want to make it specific to just one, I think that there are other players that could, you know, could enter into discussions or some of these formal discussions as well. So that would be my suggestion. On top of the specifics of, to your point, some of the things that we really need to be able to understand and dig into, I think that there are a couple that we can really point to, to help give some of that maybe clarity of direction to staff. One would be infrastructure. That's one that we've talked a lot about, and that infrastructure pertains to a lot of things, not just roads, but obviously sewer, water, all those other things. And I think we have to understand what those infrastructure needs would be to support not only Olympia Hills, but any development that may potentially annex into the city out there on the west side. So I would look at, obviously, infrastructure, and what those needs would be in really being able to understand what those needs are, and then what options we have to look at funding to fund those infrastructure needs. Beyond that, we have, as you now have mentioned, Olympia Hills, who has approvals already in place. So I think the specifics to that particular applicant, or I shouldn't say applicant, landowner, are us clearly understanding what is contained in the current approved development agreement with Salt Lake County, looking at zoning needs, density, all those other things that go along with that, design guidelines, all of those things, those are the things that now, if there was an interest of that landowner to want to submit an application for annexation, I'm sure those would be the specific items that we would need to address as a council through that process, aside from how they're currently outlined under the approval granted through the county. So, I hope that all made sense.
It did, and I think you got support from both myself and Councilman Shields on that.
Very well said.
Thank you, Clint, appreciate it. Any other items for future agendas?
I don't have any of those things.
Okay.
Mayor, I have one.
Yes.
If you'll allow.
Please.
Today, Tammy, Justin, Jonathan, Blake and I met with Salt Lake Community College about their new campus. They would like to come and visit with you at some point in future meetings, if you're open to that, as well as with planning commission. So they'd really like to spend some time with both bodies to discuss what their plans are for their future campus. It's very exciting, so we'd love to have them.
Absolutely, we'd love to have them.
Amen.
All right, item 1.3, leadership task list review, any items that need further follow-up than what we've received via email? All right, if there's none, I will move on to item 2.1, discussion of the franchise agreement with Paul Murdock for high-speed internet services. Chase?
Thank you, Mayor. So a few meetings ago, I presented a franchise agreement, a proposed franchise agreement that Mr. Paul Murdock has asked us to consider. He represents and is the owner of High Country Net LLC that installs telecommunications services within High Country. That franchise agreement would allow him to install telecommunications infrastructure within city right-ofways in exchange for a franchise fee that he would pay for the city, paid to the city. At the last meeting, the council asked some questions about the organization of High Country Net that I did not have the answers to. We've now received some of those answers from Mr. Murdock, and he's actually here, present at the meeting tonight to answer some of those for council. I'll present just some of the details that he gave to me by way of emailing, and if there are any additional questions for him, he is also available to answer those. So, from an organizational perspective, High Country Net was organized in 2017. They install wireless and fiber to the home via conduit to about 200 customers, again, mostly within High Country. They have about five, just over five miles of fiber in the ground that are servicing those customers, and they have three full-time employees, two part-timers, and then others as needed, based upon their demands. They do own all of the necessary equipment to install the fiber, to maintain the fiber, and to service those customers, and they have plans to move west from where they're currently located into the city eastward, granted that they receive the approval from the city for that franchise agreement, and would like to work with the city as well on maybe installing conduit within future subdivisions and developments that could potentially receive fiber from High Country Net in the future. So those, again, are just some of the basics of the organization of High Country Net. I haven't changed any of the language in the franchise agreement since it was last presented, but I'm happy to field any discussion or questions about any of those items from you.
Steve, Clint, you got any questions, comments?
No, I appreciate the follow-up. I did receive a very comprehensive email from Mr. Murdock, I think we all did, really kind of explaining his intentions with the background. I was quite pleased with that explanation, I think that really, the only comment I would have, and only question I would have, is there was a question last time about the utilization of existing pipelines that are in the ground, and whether or not this utilization would take a big chunk of future opportunities for additional fiber, and how that might work, what that would look like, whether or not that would require additional conduit being installed. I don't know if Blake has any comments in regards to that, but that was kind of a pending question of kind of the minutia of that a little bit.
So there is an opportunity to enter into essentially a conduit-sharing agreement that would be independent of a franchise agreement.
Understood.
This would essentially just authorize High Country Net to install within the right-ofway.
So they could go in the right-ofway, put in fiber, and service customers?
Service customers within the city in exchange for a franchise fee.
And all at their expense for infrastructure?
Yeah, all at their expense, and then they are required to obtain permits from the city, right? This franchise agreement just doesn't give them CARP launch authority to go in and do that. They would still have to submit plans to the city that would be approved, obtain the appropriate permits, and then restore all of the right-ofway that was disturbed to its existing or pre-existing or better condition.
And would they be coming from, it sounds like they'd be coming from the west into the city?
That's my understanding. Again, Mr. Murdock's here, if that's a question you do need answered from him directly, it's my understanding that that's where their customers are located. I don't know where their existing, you know, facilities or house that would feed all of that, but their current customer base is within High Country, just to the west of the city.
Probably very few opportunities westward, I would imagine.
Probably not a lot more, yeah, yeah.
Clint, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, just a couple of quick ones. First off, I appreciate the additional information that was provided by Mr. Murdock himself, and then also by Chase, as he's, again, given us some of the answers to those questions. And, you know, this is, access to good quality, high-speed internet is something that we've talked about, because there's a lot of areas in our city that have very limited options. And I know that there were some other concerns expressed just about, you know, the availability of how much conduit is in the ground, what other, how much will this utilize, what other options are they going to potentially be? And again, I think a lot, sometimes those questions will just, we don't know what all the answers to be. However, that being said, I believe that this does provide another option to an area of our city for a service that we believe is essential really in this day and age. And so, again, outside of, I think, just understanding a few of those minor details myself, generally I'm in support of it.
And one other item, if I could add, that Councilmember Smith brought up, or that triggered something in my mind, was this is a non-exclusive franchise, so this doesn't push out any other telecommunications companies that would like to come in, whether they're local or whether they're national, international companies, it wouldn't get in the way of that.
And I would be in agreement with Councilman Smith, as well as, I think there's still maybe some more understanding that we need as a body to make sure we are doing this correctly, but as a general principle, with the understanding that this is not an exclusive franchise, and that the conduit-sharing agreement would be a separate issue, yeah, I don't see any reason why we would not want to give the opportunity for a business that thinks they can provide a critical service to our residents, the opportunity to try. So as a general rule, I would be supportive and ask staff to start moving towards that direction of seeing if we can get this hammered out and worked out. Steve, any other thoughts or comments?
And I would agree, and I think that they would probably do really well if they started soliciting customers in Councilman Orne's neighborhood, Councilman Orne's neighborhood. I think they'd do really well there, so.
I'm supportive of it. I've read through the information and agree, I didn't hear this portion of the comments, but I am supportive of moving forward with it.
So is it council's direction to bring this back to the general meeting?
Yes.
For the discussion and action item agenda?
Yes. All right, we will move on to item 2.2, discussion pertaining to the 2021 fireworks restriction map. Chief Widdison?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, pleasure to be here. I'm going to just discuss the fire restrictions within Harriman City boundary. I have a few pictures here, just to go over in general what the current boundaries are, and then just ask for some guidance from you and direction on if you want anything changed, or if we want to have everything remain the same. Just as a matter of housekeeping, oh no, you moved there, that's not working. Just in general, just a couple points to make about the legal use of fireworks within Utah. So we are authorized to use aerial fireworks here. Those should only go up to 150 feet, that's the law, that's when they should explode, so 150-foot aerial, and then that's when they explode. The timeframes for those have been changed from the past. We used to have a 14-day window within our holiday season, but now that's been narrowed just a little bit. So firework use is permitted from two days prior to the holiday, the day of the holiday, and then one day after the holiday, and that's that timeframe. Hours are from 11:00 a.m. until 11:00 p.m. within those timeframes for the holiday as well. Those that are 16 years of age and younger are not permitted to either handle or ignite aerial fireworks. And the area in general, and these are just some guidelines for folks that are thinking about using aerial fireworks, making sure that the area is clear of any hazards, nice and flat, hard surface area, needs to be at least 50 feet away from any structure or any sort of other hazards, particularly overhead hazards that some folks don't think about, like power lines and things like that. And then other things to consider would be the weather conditions as we approach the holiday. What does that look like? What is our fire hazard here in this area? So what's the wind doing? What is the temperature? And really, what is our risk? And we're hoping that as we approach these holiday seasons, that people will be mindful of that. We'll do some information outreach through social media and whatnot, just to remind folks of these best practices when it comes to firework use. So as an overview, this is a map of the restrictions that are within Harriman, and just to identify a few things, there's a black dotted line there that outlines Harriman City boundary. And within that, you can see there is a lot of red within Harriman City boundary, and rightfully so. We do have some significant hazards where we live here, and a lot of urban interface areas along the Harriman City boundaries. Some of those areas in the middle that are red are just some areas that we can kind of zero in on a couple of these other slides, that present some hazards in and of themselves that aren't really up on the bench or in the interface area, but they do present some other hazards. Next. I should stop using this, because it's not working. I might do it three more times, we'll see. Okay, this is just the southern border of Harriman City, and this is WUI South, so WUI stands for Wildland Urban Interface. This is where we are, our build-out is starting to interface with that wildland area and can pose some hazards. So down here on the south end, you see the Butterfield Park, the Cove is there, the road, this doesn't have a pointer, but the road that goes up to Rose Canyon, all that is, has significant hazard. We have history here as well with fire in this particular area. Fires that are not necessarily a result of firework use, but some really large catastrophic fires that we've experienced here, and these are the areas in which we experience those fires. There, even though we're starting to build out south, within Harriman City, there still is that significant hazard of fire in the urban interface, particularly when it comes to firework use. As we move, go ahead, next one. So this is the southeast, our urban interface in the southeast area, so the Real complex there, oh yeah, the Real complex there, and Mountain View Corridor as it makes its way through that, the middle part of the map. And again, that does interface with significant amount of wildland area there. Some of that stuff has been built out since this map was built, but in general, this is pretty darn close to what we're looking at as far as the interface area.
Can I interrupt you and just ask a question?
Yeah, please.
You mentioned that we can shoot 150 feet, 150 feet in the air with a firework, right?
Yep.
Tell me the travel distance of that, because that seems like if it catches the wind at 150 feet, it can travel a long ways.
Certainly, that is a really good question. The travel distance of what we call ember cast, so when those explode, they just create something very pretty, but it's ember cast, it's burning material from that firework that can catch these higher winds aloft and carry. The travel distance in general, you could say, is 75 feet-ish per inch of mortar size. But again, it heavily is influenced by the wind conditions. Something to note is that wind conditions here at 8, 10 feet, that we are feeling on the surface, those are surface winds, they're influenced by the topography, by surrounding structures, all of that is influenced by that stuff. What we're concerned about is winds aloft, and that's harder to judge. You can have winds that are much higher and more severe, and can carry that ember cast up a great distance. So I can't 100% answer your question, but they can carry a long way, I can tell you that. With significant winds aloft, let's say in the 20 to 30 mile-per-hour range, which on the surface, we'd probably see that as maybe 10 to 15 miles an hour, those can carry probably a half mile. Now whether they're burning still or not, kind of depends on the mortar and the particular firework itself, but it can carry a long way, and they still are a significant hazard.
To be still.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah.
And we see that when we're watching fireworks after they explode, you can really see those ember casts that are still bright, and they're still flowing quite a distance, and that smoke is a good indicator of where those ember casts are going to end up. Even though you can't see with your eye that those have burned out, they could still be, they could still be burning, certainly, and present a hazard. So, and in these areas, you can see that they, we have some neighborhoods that are, appear to be pretty safe, if they were to light it on their road or whatnot. But the challenge is exactly what you're talking about. Where does that ember cast go? And is there a potential for it to get into these interface areas and cause problems?
Yeah, that's always the struggle, is it's like, someone that's living in this house, it's like, "Our area's safe." Yeah, but you're sending the embers to your neighbors, and their area's not safe.
Correct. And when looking at this map, if you were to generalize, okay, we want to be roughly 200, provide about a 200-foot buffer zone from a potential hazard, and then along with the restriction, it has to, the boundary has to be along a roadway as well. So that's sort of how these are built, is looking at a solid buffer, where that ember cast might go, what is the potential if it is lit off in these areas? So again, some of them, like you're saying, they, well, it's super safe, there's just houses around, well, a couple streets away, there are some interface areas that could cause problems.
Got you. Sorry, didn't mean to interrupt your flow.
No, please do, please do. Oh, for heaven's sake. Again, I'm going to keep trying.
He did put it back in front of you.
Did.
I thought it was.
There's numbers on it at least. Okay, so as we are looking at this map, and Councilmember Orne, you brought this up, that residents do question, why is this particular area restricted, and why is this one not? It's not just a blanket willy-nilly thing. We've looked at this stuff, and I brought this particular piece up, this is the Midas Creek area, Copper Creek neighborhood. On the north side is Emma Mine, and the south side, I think, is called Black Powder Road. We've had an inquiry from a resident over the last few years, from my understanding that is wondering that, asking that question, why is it that this is still restricted with so much build-out? I drove this yesterday and looked at it, and then looked at some of our data that we've had over the course of several years, and just to see, is there still a hazard? There still is a hazard, certainly. Midas Creek runs through there, there's heavy vegetation in there, as long as some areas along Mountain View Corridor that are still, could potentially cause problems with houses that back up right into those areas. So if you took that general guideline of, okay, well, we want a 200-foot buffer from a hazard, and then try to identify those particular areas, it'd be very difficult to go in there and follow one street or two streets and block these pieces out. It's possible to do that, but it creates a difficulty in building the map and identifying restriction zones, as well as we have to think about, really, what are we trying to accomplish here, is give good guidance to our residents. Is give good guidance to our residents and have it easy for us as responders, fire and police department, to actually enforce it. So to go through there and piecemeal that, it would be very difficult. This particular zone, again, with the creek there and and Mountain View Corridor, there would just be very small pieces within those neighborhoods that we would be allowing fireworks. And and I'm not so sure that that is best practice. I would ask for some guidance if you want that to be looked at for this. This is a question from a resident in particular. But again, that that does cause some problems as we move through the whole urban interface area of, okay, where are we going to actually do this, rather than, in general, this is where our hazards are? And can we provide a good experience, a good, safe experience for our residents with fireworks? And still be able to enforce it and really accomplish our goal with safety here? That should be the last one, I think, right? There we go.
So no fireworks is no fireworks. Can they do sparklers, can they do ground things, nothing, right?
No, no fireworks. So and and that that does cause some issues, you know, with folks, but we just, with the hazards, it's it's just, there's other areas that they can go to to actually have fun and be safe in doing so.
So are there other areas, like where could they, like if they wanted to go light off fireworks, where can they go? Can they go to public parks, where can they go?
So it's my understanding, and I would like to get some clarification on this, that public spaces within Harriman City are restricted.
That's what I thought.
And this is, and that's what the map shows, is that Harriman City parks, this whole area right here is all still restricted. Yep, so that's how it shows now, and I don't see any.
That was a decision this body made.
Right, I remember, but where could they go? If they wanted to light off fireworks, they want to be safe, where can they go light off fireworks?
That's actually a good question. At unifiedfire.org, you can look up this this fire restrictions map. It's an interactive map that you can zero in on particular neighborhoods, move the map around to see exactly where the restriction goes, what roads it follows, and then identify some good, safe areas for your your family to actually light off fireworks.
What does good, safe areas mean? Like hopefully, there's a neighbor down the road that will let you come there, is that what you're talking about?
Sure, as long as they're out of the restricted restricted zone.
Essentially, any private property that you have permission for outside of the restricted zone is eligible to use fireworks.
Right, I don't mean to belabor this, I'm just, I just, I feel, I always like to err on the side of private property rights and letting people do what they need to do. Except for when it crosses a line of endangering lives, which fire fire definitely does, right?
Lives and property, absolutely.
Yeah, for sure, so, but I but I also want to figure out a way to say, to direct them to say, I know, you can't have it in your area. It's a bummer, but here's some areas that you possibly could, but we really don't have anything to offer, huh?
No, we tried to do an open, an open area for fireworks at Butterfield Park a few years ago, which is in a very restricted area. We had a lot of people show up and it was a very dangerous situation, is my understanding. And it also caused a lot of cleanup afterwards, so we kind of shut that down. We do have other parks throughout the city, but I think we'd have the same issue. Public streets are public streets.
So a question in regards to the zone, it's kind of a all or nothing. Either you can do fireworks or you can't do fireworks. Is there any type of a hybrid zone that could be allowed for, you know, cones and stuff on the ground and sparklers or things like that? I mean, I guess I respect the fact that property that's adjacent to these areas, we definitely wouldn't want aerials there. And I understand that, but it's hard for me to see, you know, in this this Copper Creek area right in there on a residential street, how a cone that goes six feet in the air is a fire danger.
Or a sparkler.
Yeah, I just. And so I'm wondering if there's something that could be done that would be kind of a semi-restricted zone or restricted only to aerials, just so that there's some accommodation. I mean, fireworks is kind of a cultural thing, it's been in our our history and 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 it's usually done around two really important holidays that we celebrate here. And I want to be able to, at least serve the interests of all the residents participating in the holiday the best they can, while still understanding we don't want to endanger anybody's lives.
Absolutely.
Steve, I, go ahead, Clint.
I was just going to say, you know, obviously, we we want people to be able to celebrate the holidays. We want them to be able to enjoy their time. The challenge when it comes to, you know, trying to limit a no aerials versus ground effects, those types of things in an area is the problem is, is that when people go to buy them, they're all sold right next to each other. And and we really start to to open things up for people's own interpretation of what is safe and what isn't, even if we spell that out for them because they're all sold right next to each other. And and this is, fireworks is a challenging thing every single year. We have, usually have at least some talk, if not some type of a bill at the legislature each year that deals with fireworks. We already know at this point that we're going to have some type of legislation in next year's session that has to deal with fireworks. We've heard some some more talk from some of our legislators in Utah County that may want to make some changes. So it's a challenging thing. What we've tasked the members of our fire department with from UFA, and again, this is this is the realm that I work in, is is identifying the zones in those areas that, again, we can we can mitigate the most chance and risk to to property damage, life, you know, personal injury, those types of things. And and we recognize that, again, as Chief Wedderson has pointed out, there has to be easily identifiable boundaries that are put in place so that there's no, no confusion or to at least do our best to limit the confusion of what those clear boundaries are. And and it's a challenge, because every time you're going to put a boundary on a line and you're going to, or excuse me, on a road, and you're going to have the people on one side of the road that can't light fireworks and they're across, right across the street, they're going to be able to. And that's just kind of the how things are when you're dealing with trying to set these restrictions. And again, we want people to enjoy, and honestly, the best place to enjoy that is at a professional fireworks shoot. You know, there's plenty of those around, and I think you're going to see an abundance of those this year because people are so ready to be able to get out and do some type of gathering and celebration again. And and I think that those are the appropriate venues. But just from my my own experience, I would not be in favor of trying to do any type of a, you know, semi-restricted zone or something of the nature, because I think it just creates too much confusion and potential for self-interpretation at that point.
And I would agree with Clint on that one. I, as much as, as much as I love fireworks and I think they're a vital part of the culture and our celebrations, I think many of us have learned from firsthand experience how unwise people can choose to be when it comes to fireworks. And something that starts out as, oh, I'm just having a good time, quickly turns into, there are fireworks exploding in the back of my neighbor's truck. And in, I've seen it, I've seen fireworks fall over and explode in people's garages and all sorts of places that they're not supposed to happen because people just are excited, are having a good time and get reckless and careless. And, you know, I've said it before, I feel our number one responsibility is public safety. And as this is one of those situations that can quickly turn into a life or death situation within moments, I would err on the side of the recommendation of the fire department to say, these are the areas that we shouldn't do it, it's just all or nothing. We've looked at this particular area every year. Every year, the same request comes and we look, and we, the the fire department goes out and drives it every year to see if there, that we need to change, so that they are actively looking at it each year. But the recommendation that was given to us by our fire department is that it should be restricted. And so I'm going to be in support of of the the map that we have. I do think we can need to continue to look at it each year, but I don't want to get in a situation where we have a fire, which has happened in all of these areas and due to fireworks specifically, and have a house burned down or or have, you know, forbid somebody's, somebody dies because they got caught up in some sort of a fire. And so for me, I I'm in a full agreement with Clint, I'm going to go off the recommendations of the fire department.
Yeah, and I completely support the recommendations. I just, I wanted to ask the question just for consideration purposes. But but, you know, we're lucky to have two fire chiefs coming in here tonight. So I I respect both of their comments a great deal. And, you know, I I think that reevaluating it annually as, you know, the west side of of Mountain View starts to get developed in the auto mall area, things like that.
Absolutely.
There may be some appropriate changes down the road, but I'm in agreement. If the recommendations are to keep it as it is, I think we have to kind of go with that.
And just for those who are in attendance or where, I believe Councilman Henderson has joined us. Jared, do you have any comments that you'd like to add?
Yeah, thanks for trying to break in a couple of times here. This Copper Creek area, if you could go back to that map. So this is in my district, and yes, it's a, it comes up every year, several several residents consistently. But I have a couple of questions. One is the area to the east is Riverton. Is is that restricted on Riverton's side as well? Or are fireworks allowed on the Riverton side?
Allowed. Yep, with the exception of Midas Creek itself. So Midas Creek is that red zone that as it moves to the east is restricted.
So is that the UFA's recommendation to Riverton City, or have they made that determination themselves?
They they have made that determination. So that we can provide input and say, this is what the hazard is, this is what we recommend. But it's the council that can provide that direction on what they want.
So that's the part that kind of gives me pause, because every year we look at this, quite honestly, and even looking back at some of the emails, we've gone back and forth. When having a hard time explaining to residents is is why, because the reasons that are given each year are different. Last year, the main reason we were given is that, look, if if some of that area in Midas Creek does catch fire, it's difficult to get, you know, ordinance, the fire engines, et cetera, into those areas to extinguish it. So it's not so much that the 200-foot rule, there are several areas where where they could do it there, but the access to get to some of those areas if they start is is difficult. And then to look at this map and see that it's allowed on the Riverton side of the fence, but not the Harriman side. I guess I might ask that we look at what the instances for response have been on the Riverton side. If it's the same agency, UFA, what what has Riverton experienced on that side? If and if it's been reasonable, then would it be reasonable for us to look at it on our side?
Yeah, absolutely, I can I can zero in on that. I did not pull any data for Riverton, it was just Harriman City municipality. And but I can't do that, I can pull the data from Harriman to see if there's been incidents along Midas Creek or really in general where where we've seen that. And if it's, if by opening these areas, it's created an additional hazard or or not. And that's and that's historical data for sure. And what this is sort of based on is potential, really.
Yeah.
I'm just curious, if Riverton's been doing that and for how long and and what they've seen along that area for us to compare to? And then the other thing is maybe just to comment as far as enforcement goes. I know several areas where sparklers, say, are restricted and and they're used anyway. This isn't something that we're actively enforcing, as in looking for violations and trying to ticket those things. It would be, we're responding to incidents when fireworks are misused, is that correct?
Yep, and and particularly from the fire department's perspective, we're not out there to write tickets or anything, we are going to provide guidance. If somebody is firing off fireworks within the restricted zone, we're going to identify that to them that it's restricted and ask them to stop. The the timeframe for when fireworks are allowed, particularly on the holidays themselves, becomes very labor-intensive, it's very resource-intensive as well as well. Most of our resources are reacting to incidents from fireworks. There's, there is patrols that happen, we beef up our response here within Harriman City. We have extra type six or wildland engines that are patrolling, and we do that throughout all of our jurisdictions. We beef up our staffing so that we have extra resources, because we do, we are reactive, we are responding to incidents related to fireworks.
Right, and I thank you, and I'm not encouraging anyone to, you know, improperly use them or use them in areas where it's restricted. But it's not like if somebody's lighting off sparklers in their driveway, nobody's going to show up and ticket them and tell them not not to do that. But we end up, to Clint's point, we end up with, the people who bought sparklers also bought some bottle rockets and those end up on somebody's roof and starting a fire. If you wouldn't mind, I I mean, we have, I believe we have enough time to look at this. I'd like to know how long Riverton's allowed fireworks in that area and kind of what the responses, you know, responses to incidents in that area have been over that time, so we can kind of take a look at at our side of Copper Creek and see if there's some work, something we can do for the folks.
Hey, Jared, the only other thing that's that's unique to the Harriman side versus the Riverton side is that really long stretch of property along Mountain View, it is nothing but weeds and very dry weeds by that time of the year. So that's the only concerning part to me, because I 100% agree along the Copper Creek, that portion of it. But where they back up against that Mountain View corridor, that is a really big, that's nothing but fuel.
So for that one, if you go to the slide, that kind of the broader slide, that kind of shows my my neck of the woods by the cemetery. See even, see even that one, I mean, if you notice in there, if you guys don't know where where I live, I don't know if I can get a pointer up there, but my neighborhood that's west of the cemetery, the fireworks are allowed, yet everything surrounding us are an empty field with fuel, just as you described.
Right, I believe the restrictions do specifically say, though, that you must be 250 feet from any, any. Can you, can you tell me specifically, Chief, what that says?
So it's.
Sorry, but I think Sherry's point is that there's there's that fuel nearby, right?
Yeah, for sure, for sure.
Yeah, but I I think there's a, I think observably, we can see there are areas that are fire issues, like along the creek beds, right? There's fuel there, there's weeds that grow around there, there, and the buffer is only restricted to just the creek. You could go 10 feet away from it and light off stuff that could start a fire. So I I think Jared's point is valid, is that some of these lines show a substantial distance. Some, you know, some are hundreds of hundreds of feet away from fuel, like, you know, our foothills, that's a really scary area, like that. But, you know, to to your point, that field, yeah, maybe there's maybe there's restriction right next to the field, but for the other residents a little farther, I think they're they're fairly demonstrably farther away from the fuel sources. I I do think it's interesting, though, that Daybreak is a big red zone. I I used, I lived right down the street from somebody who cut the garage on fire in Daybreak.
Nice.
And and, yeah, it was a horrible situation to see the family and the whole nine yards. So I'm very attuned to it, but I also recognize, you know, to your point, there are private property rights that I'd want to, I'm at least willing to have the discussion a little more robustly to just ensure that we're doing all we can to preserve those rights as well as preserving public safety interests, so.
Chief, on, go, who's, go ahead.
Especially if we have that area right next to it in Riverton where there's kind of this, you know, same or very similar risks. If we have a case study to look at, does it does it make sense for us to open it up or does it not?
Chief, specifically in that, in the Copper Creek area, can we go back to that map? If if I understood you correctly, you were saying that the recommendation from, say, say this was not in Riverton City and this entire area was all Harriman. Would your recommendation be that that area extends farther than it does now?
I I would say that I think with Mountain View Corridor along the west side and Midas Creek running right through the middle of this particular neighborhood is sort of that issue. And that's why I was saying, we could go in there and take a look at maybe piecemealing some of this out. But it, but I would say, in general, we're still looking at, you know, along Black But it, but I would say in general, we're still looking at, you know, along Black Powder Road, all of that is going to need to be restricted.
So what, what I'm, what I'm saying is, what I want to see as we, we bring this back and have discussion is what the recommendation of the fire experts is, not what the recommendation is of another political body. And, and that's fine that they, you know, that Riverton, they have every right to make their own decisions for their own community. But I would like to know what the, the fire department's recommendation for that area is in addition to what may be going on there as well. If your recommendation is that should be restricted, whether or not it is in our city, you know, I would still like to know that's what the recommendation actually is. If the recommendation is, no, that's fine, you know, what is on the map would, would be what we would actually recommend. Well, I think that, that lends a lot of, uh, I, I think that would lend a lot of support to the, the discussion by Councilman Henderson of saying, okay, well, if that, that's the recommendation, what, what is truly different between us and them? And so I would ask that when, when you come back, that you would give us what the recommendation would be, ignoring political boundaries, ignoring previous, like what your actual recommendation is for the safety of our residents over maybe some, you know, some, uh, other factors.
Sure. Yeah, I can look at those. And, and this is just, again, this is just one area that we have had some interest from the residents on taking a look at. And it looks like it's been previous years prior to my tenure here. So.
Every year.
Every year. And I, and, and really that's going to continue. And I think that's important. I think it's important for us to look at these particular areas and, and as we are growing as a city, there are going to be times where we can look at a certain area that was restricted the previous year and we can, we can adjust that. And that's important to note is that this, this should be looked at every year. We should be adjusting boundaries as, um, as appropriate. And I'm, I'm happy to do that. That's part of my job here is to look at this and to get guidance from you and to say, what are we looking at? Again, this is one area. There's several areas where this same thing would have to happen. And I can kind of go through and look at some of those areas that might have been billed out over the last year or two years. This, this map wasn't changed last year. So, and honestly, I'm not really sure when it was last adjusted for Harriman City here. But, um, absolutely looking at some of these areas that have been built out, maybe we can start to look at zeroing in on some, identifying some areas within certain neighborhoods that could be unrestricted.
What would be more helpful, in my personal opinion, and, and I'm not saying don't do that. I think what might be more helpful is maybe sitting, helping our residents understand what the guidelines to change that would be. Instead of saying, hey, let's look at this because these guys can, you know, have, have, have said they want it. What can we do to make it a more uniform process that we can go through the entire city and say, okay, if you are, you know, you know, built out to, you know, if you're built out, you're this far from a, from a empty field, you're this, like, what are those things that we would need? So that every year when we go through that, we would have some guidelines that we could go off of, that we could give to our residents. And if they say, hey, we feel that we do fall in this category, that would give us more room to, to move forward as we could adjust that, that year to year. So that might be maybe more helpful than having a specific argument about each neighborhood every, every year of rather just saying, what are the guidelines that we really are going to go off of? And what would be the reasons we'd look to review a particular area?
You might not have to do any of this because if this drought continues, there probably won't be any fireworks.
Today notwithstanding.
And a, a lot of it is, you know, that, again, you're not, this, I'm just providing input. And I have a lot of history in, um, my background is in wildland fire. And, um, I've been here in Harriman for a long time and I've responded to these large catastrophic fires, not necessarily from fireworks, but it's an impact. And, and really it's gauging what is our temperature as a community to, for, for the risk.
Yeah, and I would say just one thing, you know, I, I've reiterated this to, to a lot of staff and people make reports is you are a far more qualified expert than us as a legislative body. And, and your guidance is helpful, but your recommendation is more meaningful. And so when it comes back, we, I'd really like you to give firmly, my recommendation is, is that we make this change or we keep this the same. That carries a lot of weight.
And, and I would just add that I want to know what your actual recommendation is, not what you think we want to hear.
Yeah.
Because I won't give you that.
I think oftentimes, I think oftentimes we get in a situation where a staff member may think we want to hear a specific thing. And so that's where the recommendation, no, I, I want to know what your actual recommendation. And that hence went back to my question from earlier is what would your recommendation actually be? Because that's where I'm probably going to lean to is what is the recommendation of the fire department?
Yep, and I, and I, I can go in and, and answer some of these questions and come back to you.
No, you have to know everything right now.
Then I'll give it to you. I can give you my, what my recommendation is right now based on the, the, the information that I have at hand.
No, please take some time, come back to us with the recommendation.
It'll be exactly the same.
Okay. That's good to know.
No, I, I, I won't do that. But what I will say is that we are faced with significant issues this summer. I mean, we have, last summer was a, was an indicator of, just an indicator of, of what the potential is here. Catastrophic fires throughout the west. Um, we are absolutely not immune from that here. I, I will always err on the side of doing everything we can to mitigate the hazard, not to be in a situation that California and Oregon was in. And this year we're faced with not just extreme drought anymore. In this area, in Harriman, we are what they're calling exceptional drought. It kind of cuts right down the middle of Salt Lake County, extreme versus exceptional, but we're exceptional. This is a, in every way, right?
When we do it, we do it right.
It's going to be hot, it's going to be dry. Um, we're already low on moisture and snowpack. The hazard's there for sure.
And, and to be clear, firework fires in the last couple of years have burned down people's homes in our community. Like this is not just a hypothetical thing. In Harriman or in the surrounding area, we have had multiple homes that have been burned down due to fires that were started by fireworks. And so I, I personally agree with you. I'm not, I don't want to be at any place where we put somebody's home and life at risk because we want to, you know, to nudge it. Now, at the same time, once again, I'm looking for your recommendation on what you think we can.
Absolutely. And, and again, I, I was just saying this is where I'm coming from. This would be, this is, my guidance is going to be influenced by, um, our history here in Harriman City. And what is predicted coming up for this, uh, summer. Having said that, I think there is value in looking at some of these areas, coming up with some guidance for residents to actually inquire as to whether they can have their area unrestricted and really just putting that on us as well as taking a look at some of these areas as we move forward and saying, okay, let's, let's open this area up. It's significantly built out. It makes sense to make it unrestricted. Um, I think there's value in that.
Well, chief, for what it's worth, you're the man. We, we just, we appreciate and love all the, the work and support you do in protecting this community and the residents here. And, and we know that you and your team have, have gone to other states to fight fires there too and, and protect, you know, life and property there as well. And, uh, you know, it's been articulated by so many members of this council is, you know, when everybody else is running away, you guys are running into it. And it takes a, a special kind of, uh, of a person to do that.
Special is a good way to put it.
Yeah, especially kind of crazy, I think, but yeah.
Exceptional, okay.
Exceptional kind of person. But we're, we're grateful for it. So thank you for all you do.
We are lucky, we have amazing crews here in Harriman at our stations, really do. We're incredibly lucky here to have a station that's staffed with wildland fire, um, specific professionals with tons of experience, tons of qualifications, have seen large fires and know how to manage them. Additionally, it's, we are the only fire department in the state of Utah that has delegated authority to, um, contact, uh, or request air resources directly right now. And that's out of Station 103, call it the Wildland Duty Officer. It is a very long process to get to the point where you are qualified to do that. And our, all of the captains at 103 have that qualification, have the ability to say, which we've done historically for a decade, had that delegation that says we can call directly without any state or federal oversight, the resources that we need because of the area that we have, which is heavily influenced by urban interface and risk.
Well, now all we've got to do is get you a station that's matches the.
We're on our way. We're on our way. Sounds like it. So, yeah, thanks for that. I appreciate it.
Is there any further discussion for the chief?
No, thanks chief.
Thank you very much chief, we appreciate it. Uh, we will move on to item 2.3 Laguna, Malibu development discussion. Blake.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So, um, just before we start, I just want to let you know that the developers representatives are here in person and their attorney is on the line if there are any questions as we work through this.
Thank you.
So the Laguna Malibu property, did I make that work or did you do that? Oh, sweet.
So you were saying it was the fire chief that was the problem?
So, um, there are no fireworks allowed here either.
Good.
So we're all on the same page with that. But this is the general project location. It's, uh, up in the South Hills of Harriman. And, uh, we'll get a little bit more information as I work through this on what it's, what it's nearby, what's around it, how we get there and stuff. So the Malibu and Laguna property, there are two large parcels. Laguna is obviously larger and it's, uh, highlighted in the green there. About 720 acres and the Malibu property is just to the east of it, 268 acres. The, um, limitations to development up here are, it's kind of challenging. As you can see, the, there's 30% slope on this map that's the hashed area. So a lot of that is in our hillside overlay. Um, that doesn't allow for development inside of it. It allows for roads and trails, but the roads can only have certain slopes and lengths and restrictions on, on the road construction. There's, the property in general is entirely dependent on access from the east up through the South Hills and Staker properties, especially from Malibu. Laguna, as you can see up on the north end, has a piece of that property that touches Juniper Crest Road. And we'll talk about that in just a second. Some of the other challenges we have here are water supply. Pretty much this entire property is above any zone that we supply water to currently. And some of the property is actually above any zone we've anticipated servicing water to. So that it would require some special, um, project improvement water system to, to service water to any homes up in this area. It's pretty high elevation. Um, and then the, the whole south end and a piece of the west end of Laguna are bordered by Camp Williams. And the, the road that runs along there is a full, um, live training area. And so there is some concern from the camp with, uh, activities that they do and the compatibility of that with any development along here. We've actually met with a representative from, from the camp and talked about this. And there's, uh, some discussion later tonight on some property for, for this area. So the, the first step to do on this was to look at the general plan. This is a highlight of our current adopted general plan. And this would be in play if the property were to be developed underneath a, a development agreement such as Rosecrest or, um, South Hills. Mainly because the, the area didn't change for general plan from the old general plan to the new general plan. And if it did, it was minor changes. So, so this is still the same. You can see there's a piece at the north end, that's the piece I was talking about. It's actually zoned. The next slide I'll get to, I'll talk about zoning. But in the general plan, the north piece has about 50 acres, uh, that would allow for 84 units maximum because the zoning on that has a zoning condition of 1.7 units per acre max. There's a piece of it that's resort recreational that goes across the middle. And the hard thing with that is that's right where Camp Williams wants their buffer zone. And then the rest of it's open space and that open space generally lines up with our, our hillside overlay, that 30% slope. And there's no, there are no units allowed in the, in the open space area. But the area has all been zoned to this point. So the, the north end has an R115 zone with a zoning condition, like I said, so there's 84 units. They, they have access off of Juniper Crest Road. They have a water system that could supply them. There's, there's sewer at the road. They could, they could totally logically develop. There is also a little piece, if you look just below that, a little lighter, not the light, light green, but a medium green. That's a little chunk that's zone A1 and I forgot to put that in the, the breakdown here, but it, it may be logical at some point for the developer to request a rezone of that piece to go with the R115. Everything to the east of this is part of Rosecrest and it's, it's zoned the R115 as well. If that development's the Greystone Development, if you're familiar with it. And then the rest of the property, all 840 acres remaining are zoned FR 2.5. I did put this allows for clustering, but I was looking at an old version of the code. It does not allow for clustering.
That was going to be my very specific, because I believe we had that whole conversation a while back.
But if you read the code, there's some interesting language that's remnant in there that talks about, um, development. What is the name of that, Michael? Develop, group development or?
Dwelling groups.
Dwelling groups, dwelling groups. Forgot the word of, word when I was up here. So yeah, dwelling groups are typically apartments and that still remains in that zone, but all the other wording in that zone doesn't allow for that. So, um, I think that was a piece that got left when that zone was redone back in 2015, 2016, whenever the last time the FR 2.5 zone was, was looked at. So in, in all reality, it says there's 336 units maximum, but it's most likely you can't get that many on the developable land here that's outside of that hillside overlay. So it would be up to the developer to lay that out and show how many they could get in there, two and a half acre lots. And then if you could service water to them. And, and so the next, next discussion is transportation. There is, there is a challenge here to get transportation and have the project pencil out for a developer. Just with that size of lot and the number of lots you could actually get in there, um, it would be difficult to, to develop anything up here. So the, the buffer, as I talked about, I've got a couple of slides here. That first white line you see is the half mile buffer. And the second line's the quarter mile buffer. The camp was agreeable to maybe something less and working, um, a little bit more with the hillside overlay. You can see there's a couple of, I guess, peninsulas of develop, developable land that kind of go to the south of that half mile buffer, right up against the, the border. And there may be some opportunity there to, um, purchase those peninsulas with possibly ACAB money and then allow some development inside that area. And, um, this is looking at it in 2D. The, the main discussion we had was, um, the mountains and the slopes. This road is down below and there's hills and then the development would be on the other side. So there might be a buffer vertically with just the topography of the land. And, uh, so that's.
Do you have a topographic map on this one?
I don't. Um, we're.
You send us one.
We can, we can put one together and, and send it out. Generally on the far west end, between the quarter mile and half mile buffer, you can see from the camp down into that area. And then that first peninsula underneath the, where it says buffer on, straight below that, that area, the road kind of comes at grade and there's a canyon you can see through, but all the rest of that area is much higher or behind a hill from the training road and the camp. Let's see.
And this is, this would be eligible for ACAB funds, right?
Yes. So just, just to kind of summarize this, the, uh, total project size is, is about a thousand acres. It's, it's pretty large. I kind of talked a little bit about the general plan and the zoning, that the zoning does govern here unless this was brought in with a, with one of the development agreements, then they could add the units and do the thing shifted around, but it'd still have to develop per the general plan. That's, that's the clause in the agreement. The utility challenges, transportation, access. Oh, I forgot to kind of go over that. Let's kind of go back and take a look at that. So you can, you can see the roads that are being proposed here. And, and so the, the main access road would come up from the east and then follow the, the developable area as it went up. The key thing with this access road is it would provide access back to purch- to property that we've already purchased with ACAB dollars. So it would give access to the, for the public back into this area for recreational uses and some of those, uh, potential amenities we could put in there.
Is that the only planned exit for that area then? Is that the only planned exit for that area then?
There, there are possibly some ways to come over from the south side.
But, but as of right now?
As of right now, this is the one that we can see that would work with our current code and standards. We would probably have to modify code or get some detailed survey to see what canyons and slopes we could follow up coming from the north.
But, but essentially, for that area, we have one way in, one way out?
Yes, that's correct. So, that's the transportation access issue here. Very similar to how the Cove was for years until we had secondary roads coming out of the Cove. Emergency services, this area is fairly remote. So, there would, there would be some concerns with getting fire access or police access up into this, this area, especially with the single access. And then some of the benefits of the new development, like I, like I said, we could capitalize on getting some more buffer along the camp here and, and then access to our open space that we've purchased with the ACUB dollars and, and providing recreational opportunities up there for, for that. So, be happy to answer any questions or remember the developer and their attorney are, are available for any questions you might have there as well.
So, what is the proposal currently that, that, for these, for this development?
What's the question?
So, there, there hasn't been a, a real detailed plan provided yet. There's just been discussions about development in this area. And so, the, the proposal would be that with working with us to, to get more ACUB buffer along that area, that there would be some negotiations to, if you're taking away developable land, maybe allowing some rezone or some other opportunities down lower to put, put housing where it would fit and take it away from where we'd want to keep buffer.
So, what they're saying is, so, so what you're relaying to us, maybe, whether that's correct or not, what you're relating to us is that in exchange for possibly purchasing with ACUB funding for the city, they would want additional density down the hill so they could put in more units there?
And I don't even know if it would be actually additional density, but use the units that could be used up there down lower. So, I guess it would be more dense down lower, but overall, it wouldn't be more dense.
But they don't want to give up any units is what, is, okay. That, that tells me, that's... I'm not trying to put words into their mouth. Please don't, please don't.
That's my understanding of the proposal here.
And please don't think that I'm trying to interpret or insinuate anything. I'm just trying to understand the discussion that we're having.
Yep.
So, the only development that, that is included in the Laguna Malibu is just on that little tiny yellow spot?
Currently, the only place that can develop, that has all the utilities and everything available, whoops, went too far, is that area that I've highlighted that is the R-115 zone.
That has zoning condition. And what's the zoning condition specifically?
1.7 units per acre maximum. So...
When was that zoning condition put in place?
That was when it was rezoned in 2017, yeah. Or zoned in 2015. So, that's when it was done.
So, they're just wanting to move forward on those 84 units?
They could move forward on that piece. They don't need to do anything there. It's the, it's the south piece, the, the island that you see running up the middle.
They want to be able to build those units?
That area, along that road that you can see.
And have they approached us with a, a plan, a development plan for those, for that area?
No, they've, we've been, we've been having some, several discussions and they want to talk about a development agreement. We've brought it to the Community Development Committee meetings. And there hasn't been much traction there with the development agreement. So, when you asked at our last meeting to bring this forward, we put it on the agenda to, to talk about it. And I think that would be the interest, would be wanting to enter into discussions about a development agreement.
So, if you can go back, maybe one slide or two slides here, let me see. Go back one more slide. So, this area, this resort recreational, the way that it's zoned right now, there could be 52 units over 130 acres?
Yeah, I just took the shape and I have the acreage of that kind of light brown color. That's 130 and a half acres.
130-ish acres, right?
That times point four, yep, 52.
And that's really the only area that they could, could build these 52 units?
So, that's the general plan. So, in all reality, since the, the entire thing is zoned, as you can see, that's all zoned FR 2.5. So, it's anything outside of that hillside overlay is really where development could occur per code.
But specifically in the hillside over, or in the FR 2.5, they can't cluster. So, they would have to keep it two and a half acres or two and a half acre units, or sorry, lots.
Right. So, it would be two and a half acre lots out of 130 acres. That's where we're getting these 54-ish?
That, that was what the general plan says. It's probably a bit more than that because you can see on this east end, there, there was an area that was green in the general plan map that's actually zoned FR 2.5 that, that isn't in the hillside overlay.
So, I, I, I'm just trying to, I want to be clear kind of where the discussion query is here. If there's, if the ACUB funds were used to purchase that area and there were 50 units eliminated, is the ask to put 50 units more in another area? I mean, 50 units doesn't seem like a prohibitive number for discussion here. It's not like we're adding hundreds of units somewhere. And, and with that little green piece, perhaps a rezone could allow a little more, a few more units there. I, I, I'm just, I, I guess I'm trying to understand where's this conversation trying to head to?
I, I think there's going to be a request for a rezone, some additional units that, that makes sense, that can actually make it profitable to them. And then there has been a plan shown where there is some development up higher in the, in the hillside overlay. They've had some more detailed survey that shows that, that there's some areas up there that are developable. And so, when, when the city put together this hillside overlay zone, they just used general contours and used a GIS software and just kind of picked a whole area. And actually, in these areas, you can find some developable areas in that overlay that can work. So, as we, if, if we're, if the council's okay with it to, to work more with this developer, then that would be, we could flesh that out more and find out where those areas are, get more into the ask. And if, I don't know, if you want to ask, ask the developer if they, what their intentions are. I'm, I'm not 100% clear on them.
I think, I think this is a good discussion for us to have as a, as a body right now. Before I go any further, I know we've been talking here for a while. Clint and Jared, do you guys have any thoughts, comments, discussions, questions you want to ask?
This is Clint. I, I think you guys have been asking all of the questions that I would have had as well in just understanding, again, the, the areas that they have, what it, what the potential ask would be for a potential, I guess, movement of, of density as it relates to ACUB. So, I, I think, again, I've got the, the high level understanding of kind of where we're heading in this discussion. So, I appreciate that.
Jared, any thoughts?
Ditto. I talked kind of in circles on this, both kind of in these meetings as well as in the community development. I mean, if there was a specific ask, then let's talk about as far as the general, or as far as a, oh, gosh. Sorry, the master, an MDA goes, we've kind of said we're, this hasn't worked out for us too well in the past. But every time it comes up in context of this project, I've, I've never heard why it would be needed. So, I guess at this point, I mean, I would think we just need some specifics to consider. I don't know what we're supposed to be considering.
I think partly we asked for some update on this so we could really understand what we were looking at. So, part of this is an ask from us for, for staff to provide us a better overview of what we're looking at.
Yeah, it was definitely my ask and just because I, I would like to understand what the proposal is. I'd like to understand what, what they'd like to put up here. And I don't want them to get so far down the road that if the answer's just going to be no, but I, I would like to understand what the proposal is. Here's what we'd like it to be. Here's, here's, here's the areas that we think are developable and here's why. And just, just have a better understanding of what that proposal is. Because I, I am intrigued, quite frankly, by access to our open space. I think that, I think that those are things the city is going to desperately need if we want people to come here and use our trails. But you have to park, you have to find it through some neighborhood and some little side road and there's no place to park. That's prohibitive to all the wonderful trails we have. So, if there's, can be access granted by some of this stuff that will really help benefit us, I think that that's a win-win for both, both entities. So, I, I just would really like to better understand what, what the ask is, what the proposal is. This is what we're looking at. So, I, I would just ask that you continue down that road if it's a development agreement. I, I agree with Jared that we've gotten burned on a lot of them before, for sure. But I certainly think we have an attorney that's capable of, of looking at that and helping make sure that both, both parties are protected in those, in that agreement. But I just want to understand what the ask is.
Yeah, because I, I think we're clear that there's some challenges. Like, that's what's been presented. There's some challenges here. There's some obstacles.
Yeah, I'm, I'm...
What do you want us to do about it right now?
Sorry, Jared. Yeah, I'm definitely not saying I'm, I'm against anything or, or not. I just, I just don't know what we're supposed to even be looking at.
Okay. So, just to kind of put something out there in my position in regards to this, because what it kind of sounds like is that in the discussion of possibly purchasing this land through ACUB funding, that there's a request to move density that we would be, from the land that we would be purchasing into another place. It is my opinion that if we are purchasing the land, we are purchasing, purchasing the density that goes with it. So, if the question for me, if the question is, well, we'll let you buy the land, but you have to let us still build those same units somewhere else, that's a no-go for me. And I just want, I want to be clear with that upfront. It's not that, it's, it's not that I'm trying to put a kibosh on anything. It's simply that if we're purchasing the land, we're purchasing the, the density that goes with that land too. And so, for me, if, if we're going to purchase land, we're not, I'm not going to be in favor of moving any density from that land to somewhere else down lower and increasing density somewhere else so they can get those units in. So, if the question is, well, these are areas that are not 30%, we should be able to build there. I am happy to have them provide us with that data and show us where those areas are and, and have our staff confirm that. And then I'm happy to say, sure, not a problem. That totally goes with our code. You know, because that's, that's, what we've said is the law and we should follow it just as anybody, as we ask them to follow it. So, if there's a request to say that this area is not 30%, let me build here, please, let's, let's figure that out. But as far in my opinion, and I'm just one member of this body, if, if the discussion is supposed to be surrounding around the fact that, hey, we want to, you know, we're going to buy this land, but you have to let us still build these units, that's a no-go for me. And so, I just want to say that upfront.
And I think also, if you think about when you get further and further up on the hill, these views become incredible. Even if you go to Real right now and look out through the valley. And so, if we want to put some big estate homes or something like up in, in those types of areas, this is a prime location for those types of things, which our, our city could use more of that type of inventory. So, if there's, if they're proposing something like that, you know, by piecemealing out some places, that, that makes sense to me. And again, it allows us a benefit of some access.
I do, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm in favor, again, in access for recreation, right? We've talked about that ad nauseam. So, I just, I, I, I don't know what staff's looking for or if it's a developer that's looking for something. But it seems that if staff's asking for direction, at least for me, it would be, we'll talk to them and I'm, I'm willing to consider anything, anywhere, but we don't, we don't have any particulars to go on here.
Do we, as we're having this further discussion moving forward, is this the only way that that area is going to have access? Or are there's other ways that we can get access to this land?
There is access, there, there will be access at Juniper Canyon. And then we will have some access at some of the neighborhoods that are lower. But as far as getting up higher into the backside, that would be the only access.
That would be the only, for the, the upper parts of it?
Yes, correct.
Mayor, this is Clint. I, I just want to kind of echo what you've said. I think you've made a, a good point in terms of really what our general rule and philosophy has been over the years in purchasing a lot of this other land up there in term, with ACUB funding. And that is, one, it has certainly been to create that buffer zone around the camp. It has been to purchase and preserve that land as open space. And in some cases, it certainly is, is been because there, there's a lot of development challenges in all of this area up there because of slope and, and access and all of those types of things. But that being said, I think generally as we have purchased land using ACUB funds, I'm not aware of, at least sitting here right now tonight, I'm not aware of any instances where we have purchased land and allowed them to, to move density or units as a result of, of purchasing some of that land. We have done that, just as you've clearly pointed out, more than an effort to, to take those, the potential of those units away. And I think that we should be very cognizant of that and that we should not, we should be very cautious of considering anything different than what, how we have approached the use of the ACUB funding and the intent of using that ACUB funding to, to purchase this land in the future.
There has been some discussion with the developer about funding some improvements in that area too. So, maybe that could be some offset as they start working through details of a potential agreement is if they funded some of the infrastructure, that would be maybe pavilions or playfields or parking lots or something, then maybe they could get that credit back. I, I don't know.
And I'd be far more, I'd be far more open to something like that. I just, in, in regards specifically to ACUB, if we're purchasing lands, like we're purchasing the density that goes with it. Like, that's just, that's the way I look at it. And I, I think that's what we're saying here is, you know, that could change. But I just want to be upfront at the beginning of that, that this is not something that I'm going to be considering of, of, hey, well, we'll let you purchase the land and get all the value of the land. Plus, we get to build it. Like, that, to me, is not the, the intent here. So, I, like I said though, I'm still open. If they have something they want to bring, they, like, if they want to develop and they can figure it out and they can make it, pencil it out, that's great. They're welcome to do that. If it doesn't pencil out, then maybe that's more incentive for them to let us purchase it with ACUB funding. So, that's, that's the way I look at it.
Any further, any further discussion on this item or have we beat this one to death? Okay. With that, we, I will accept a motion to take a brief recess and then go into our general meeting.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We will begin at 7:10.